Good evening. This is the February 7, 2019, meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, being held in Town Council chambers. It is now 7:02 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am, will the commission please introduce herself, starting on my right?
Brian Cotton, alternate.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
Bruno Mayini, commissioner.
Leanna Brosi, commissioner.
William Porter, chairman.
Paul Leacy, secretary.
Michael Viale, vice chairman.
Will Agresta, planning and zoning administrator.
Scott Schatz, line paneling chair.
Margaret Cousey, acting recordings secretary.
Thank you. Item number three, organizational and administrative matters. The commission already knows, but alternate commissioner Jonathan Formicella has resigned from the commission. We would like to publicly thank him for his service and the time and commitment that he provided to the commission while he served. We are currently searching for a replacement to fill his seat. Item number four, general public participation. Is there anyone here who would like to address the commission on an issue that's not related to a public hearing or application? Seeing none. Item number five, general appointments. 1380 Monroe Turnpike, intended subdivision of 31 and a half acre lot.
I'm here, present.
Okay. Name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Attorney Laurel Fedor, and I represent the estate of John J. Stofan. It was suggested that I come before the board for this general appointment application. I'm told that you do have the plans for the overhead projector, but I have plans if you want to look at paper plans. I have the mini versions and I have the full version.
Okay, I think what's on the screen-
Is sufficient?
Should be sufficient.
Okay. What we're trying to do here, this family, the Stofan family, has lived in Monroe, well, the ancestors have been in Monroe now for, since the 1940s, I believe. And one of the last, in the family, his name is John J. Stofan, he left a will, and in his will, he has 31 and a half acres at 1380 Monroe Turnpike. And what he wants, what his intent with this will is to leave, to split it 50/50 with his niece and the other 50 with, for Frank Schrodel, whose property abuts Monroe Turnpike there. So what we're looking to do is split the land according to the will, and what we'd like to do is have the back portion, the 15 acre, I don't know if you have a subdivision plot? Or you want me to do it?
Well, we can use that other map. Basically, they want to split it somewhat like-
Well, there's a picture of it. I think it might be a good idea for them to see the picture.
Okay. Where was it? I don't know why they did that. Do you know what that is?
That's like the drainage plan. It's probably the first one.
That's the memo. I know, the first one has-
It says set.
I'm gonna have to get this stuff off of it. They don't go away. You gotta shut them off.
The estate wants to conform to the will, and in order to do that, we want to subdivide the land, like I said. The land, the back portion of the land, is very steep, and, and the pipeline runs through it. I'm sure you're familiar with the gas pipeline that went through, and so on the back, to the right of the map, is that's where that is. The parcel that we want to have made a building lot borders Bird's Eye Road. There's a development, Bird's Eye, and they've just constructed a number of houses. They had approval for 22 lots. They changed the zoning for that particular area. They changed it to what's called a DRR. So, DRR, the Design Recreational Residence District. So this parcel borders that development. So we were looking to come into Bird's Eye. We already had previously, there, but there's a right-of-way on the maps that had been filed with the town hall, because Mr. Stofan had deeded land to his nephew a number of years ago. So that's essentially what we want to do in a nutshell. So 31 acres, just divide it in two lots, put one house on.
Do you mind if I walk through the property history a little bit, William?
Sure.
Okay. So the original Stofan property was this property that's in yellow, including this portion that was in yellow and this red line here. Bird's Eye is the lands down here, which connects, there's more lots in Bird's Eye here, and it connects to what was called Trailside, which is another 10 or so lots here that come out to Monroe Turnpike around here. So when Bird's Eye subdivision got approved many years ago, it did include a zone change, which changed, it went from a two-acre zone to the DRR, which is now the RR district. What the RR district is, is that it stays with the density of one house per two, one lot per two acres, but it allows the lots to come to a smaller size, because the, so if you make a lot one acre, the balance of the one acre for the two acres goes into the open space. So there's a lot of open space. It surrounds the smaller lots in here. This is open space from it, this is open space from it, this is open space from it. It created, this was a dead-end road where Trailside was, had about 10 or 12 lots. This added another 22 lots, I believe, 20 lots, with a road that came in here, with a cul-de-sac here, and then it was a cul-de-sac here. And I don't know exactly the timing, but around the same time, the Stofan property came in for a subdivision, for a two-lot subdivision. And it was also increasing the right-of-way from Bird's Eye in this little strip here, if you see this little strip? That was part of the Stofan subdivision. It created this lot, which was subsequently sold to Wayne Stofan. It left, the other lot was this lot. So that was Lot 1, Lot 2, and a right-of-way with a cul-de-sac. There's, it's not showing on this map, but on the land record maps, it shows the circle They filed that map, they posted a bond, anything because this wasn't being built, because you can't build a road right here, because there's no way to get to it. So they waited, they waited, they waited. This wasn't getting done. Through that course of time, in addition to this changing ownership to Wayne Stofan, so now you had the two lots with two different owners, they did a lot-line change here with Mr., what was his name?
Schrodel.
Schrodel. He owned this lot, and they did a lot-line change, moving this line, moving this line to here. And he absorbed that portion of that Lot 1.
So Mr. Schrodel could have, do more farming.
Yeah, he'd have a bigger lot, and that left this lot with the right-of-way and Wayne's lot. Eventually, this subdivision, oh, excuse me, and at some point, they asked for their bond back. This commission gave the bond back. It was identified that, you know, there's nothing we can do with this, because there's no road, blah, blah, blah. So the bond was given back. And the subdivision had lapsed prior to that. Two years prior to that, it lapsed, and two years later, they asked for the bond back. So this subdivision, although it's been recorded and the lots are there, it's lapsed. It no longer has an approval. So the status of this right-of-way isn't really there anymore. This lot is landlocked, and this lot obviously has frontage still. And they still have a little bit of frontage right here on the Bridal Side extension. Along came Bridal Side, go ahead.
Just for clarification, that Lot 2 had been sold or transferred.
Transferred in ownership.
But the subdivision has lapsed.
The subdivision lapses, yeah. And that can happen. That can happen. Since then, in more recent time, someone bought this property and is actively developing it today. And by spring, they should be, I believe, be asking for acceptance of the road system.
Oh, so that's not built then?
This is built, it's under construction now, and I believe by spring, we're gonna have an application for it to be deemed complete by your commission.
And they've installed a cul-de-sac at the north end?
Right now, there's a cul-de-sac here, as per the, a plan of Bird's Eye. Now, the problem is, let's go forward, they want to re-resurrect some type of subdivision to split this lot, the remaining lot lawn, what's left of Lot 1, into two lots, a front lot and a back lot. They went to the zoning board of appeals for variances related to lack of street frontage, correct?
Right, and they, currently, the petition is open-
Yes.
Pending this meeting.
There's a couple of things why it's pending. It's pending, there's a couple of questions out there for the ZBA. One question is if it even has jurisdiction in front of the ZBA, or because of the fact that it's a self-created situation, in that they're asking for a subdivision. The lot from which they're asking a variance of does not presently exist today. It's to help create a lot, you know, create two lots. And that is deemed in the case law, potentially as a self-created situation, which is a reason for not giving a variance. The other would be, to get that, if you can pass that hurdle, is there a hardship? And one of the problems with the ZBA with regards to the hardship was, well, you need to subdivide this property, and you haven't exhausted that ability, you haven't gone to this commission to find out if you're gonna be able to achieve a subdivision, because if you can get a subdivision without a variance, and there's a couple of ways to do that, and may not be what the applicant wants to do, they could say, well, you don't have a hardship, because you could, you could subdivide it, and you could build a road, and you would have conforming lots. So they wanted, rather than decide, they said, let's leave it open, go talk to the Planning and Zoning Commission about how it feels about the subdivision, because there is another standard that affects the subdivision of this property today that did not exist at the time when this was approved and when this was approved. And what it is, is the code, the subdivision code, has been modified in the last four or five years to include two new standards. One standard was that a dead-end cul-de-sac cannot serve any more than 12 lots. You already have 10 plus 22, that's about 30. And then, the second standard is, a cul-de-sac, dead-end cul-de-sac can't be any longer than, I believe, it's 2,000 linear feet, and it already is 3,000 linear feet.
2,000 is the limit.
Yeah, and it's already 3,000.
However, there, there's a stipulation that the commission may approve longer where adequate emergency access provisions are provided.
Correct.
And that's where if there was an access gate on another road-
Right.
-where emergency vehicles could get in.
Right. So that's sort of why there's a pause with the ZBA, because the ZBA has no authority over the subdivision regulations, and it's your board under the subdivision that would have that ability to modify those standards in the subdivision regulations, if it was of the mind and had a plan for it. So they're seeking some input from you as to the likelihood or non-likelihood of that.
Based on our current subdivision regulations, the only way that I see you could easily subdivide this property is to extend that road out to Monroe Turnpike.
Oh, bring it all the way over?
And then, then you would have the frontage, you would have the access, and there would be no, there would be no question about the ability to subdivide it.
Of course.
You only want to put one house?
That's it.
On?
15 acres.
East?
Correct.
Side?
Yeah.
And the other, the lot fronting 111 would be just vacant?
There already is a small house there.
The house, maybe.
The reason why you only have one house on the east side of the property is because the topography of the land, it's a very steep hill. I mean, it's, I've walked, I've walked it, and it's, you know, really right down there, so.
There's one point I forgot to say, and Michael, your question reminds me of that. It's actually a little bit more than just splitting this out in one lot and one lot. This lot, which was spun off and sold to Wayne, is also out there, and it doesn't have technically, it's on a, on a piece of right-of-way on a map that's of a lapsed subdivision. So you, as a commission, can't ignore that lot. That lot would have to be addressed as well, as far as how does it get access, and how does it become legal, or whatever the status that would be. So it's really, the question is really three lots in some sense. It's not really just one lot.
I mean, part of the reason why I'm here is because of the way the, the prior area there was approved for 22 lots with this Design Recreational Residence District. I mean, the property borders that.
So you just want to extend that road, the right-of-way road?
Or just put in a driveway? If you want to show the other, a map, just to show what we're looking to do?
Just put in a driveway.
It's a driveway. That's it?
And again, there is a lot here that has to be addressed as well.
Well, that, well, I'm not representing Mr., you know, Wayne.
I know, but the commission, the commission represents both you and-
I understand, I'm just saying.
That other lot-
I mean, you can make it two driveways. I'm sorry.
Does Lot 2 have frontage?
Well, the only frontage is, there's, I guess it's 50 feet probably across here that fronts on this right-of-way. That's the only legal frontage they have, other than the frontage on Monroe Turnpike. The Wayne Stofan lot is technically landlocked now, because the subdivision lapsed. There was supposed to be an extension of the road in this right-of-way with a new cul-de-sac, which would have gave him frontage, and they didn't, this lot didn't need that frontage at the time. When they put that right-of-way, it was simply to give this lot frontage.
But if that right-of-way went in, forgetting for a moment about the 2,000-foot limitation, that right-of-way went in, the circle was extended back there.
Yeah, and you waived, and you waived the length and the number of lots, that's the way you-
Then the back lot would have sufficient-
Right, that would address both lots.
Both lots would have road frontage.
So you're saying if you extended the road a bit?
Right.
And then went for-
Well, it would be a subdivision.
How many feet would you have to extend the road? How many feet?
How many feet? Probably, probably 80.
Well, you would, you would need to get it in, and you'd need to get the cul-de-sac. So whether that's here or here, and don't forget, there's wet ones here too.
And you can't, you can't offset it because of right-
And you can't go this way, because that lot's not big, unless they gave him land and made his lot bigger. And there's another unknown issue right now, that we don't have information about. This area, when they broke this open and started building this, the property bleeds water, and we don't know exactly why, because it's on off-site location, but it's bleeding right in here, and that hasn't been resolved, has it?
No, and we suspect that is wetlands.
We suspect there's more wetlands in here, but-
Well, we just proposed to put in a driveway. I mean, if, if we have to do a, you know-
In order to have a legal lot, though, you have to have sufficient road frontage, and a driveway wouldn't provide that.
I understand.
There's a proposed residence there, that the driveway's going to?
Correct.
What's on the top? Is that more land?
But, Paul, this is dependent on splitting the lot.
Right.
But where's it lead to?
That's up to Marion Heights.
Yeah, that's the Sisters.
What, here? This is the Sisters' common property?
Is that a Sisters?
That's their border.
Right there, though?
The Commons-
Right there.
Well, that's the property.
You can see the, the residence of the Sisters from that property line.
If you recall, they moved, they demolished the old common, and built further north, so that whole lane was potentially a development area.
Right.
And that goes down to, has a lot of frontage down on Monroe Turnpike as well.
So the applicant is looking to simply create two lots?
Yes.
Plus that smaller. But in the future, they could always do a further subdivision with additional lots. Is that correct?
Not on the one on the right, because of the topography, if you want to show them that map, and show the extent of the, I don't know if you can see it there. I have other maps, if you'd like to see them other-
I mean, it's, it is steep on this end. Well, actually, you're not, you don't see the lines, because they're, they're 10-foot contours.
So you see them by the house?
Yeah, no, these are different contours here.
The lines are much tighter, because it's steep.
These are 10, these are 2.
Two different. Let's see that.
But again, for you to do a subdivision, you have to meet the code, and you have to, or give waivers.
What about the other section? You could do a subdivision on there.
On this?
Yeah.
It's a lot of wetlands.
This is the wetland, this is the-
It's a lot of wetlands here.
But there was a previous subdivision that was approved for this whole area?
It was just two lots. It's not, it wasn't, you know, to put in a mass amount of houses.
It's a big lot and a holding lot, and extended the road right-of-way.
Yeah, they were just trying to get this, they really were just trying to get this lot, and that's what they achieved.
Just to cut off-
And they were trying to extend off of this, and they're just, timing-wise, this just didn't happen. If that had happened, we wouldn't be here.
This is true.
Because this right-of-way would have been there with the cul-de-sac, and then you could have used that as, you can use that as frontage the same as they can use it.
So you'd have to put that in.
So the reality is, you can do a subdivision with a road. The only caveat now is, you would have to give your waiver on the length and the number of lots.
That would be ZBA then?
No, that's you.
That would be us.
See, that's the condition that ZBA's in, because they're not, they can't give that kind of variance. So, in a sense, the ZBA could rule, one, that this is self-created, because it's a subdivision, and there's no reason to be in front of us, and, two, if they didn't agree with that, they, there's no hardship, because you can subdivide the property and put a road in. Or you haven't gotten a denial for the subdivision.
Right.
Well, the thing is about the road, if you did a road all the way down to 111, there's a lot of wetlands there. So we're trying not to, you know, disturb, we're trying to disturb as little as possible.
Are you willing to extend the cul-de-sac, or no? Are you willing to extend the road?
Well, I, if we have to, I guess we have to, but I would, you know, that's a big, you know, this isn't a developer, this is just-
No, no, I have that. No, and I understand that.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, is for us to make these lots, you probably would have to extend the road, because there's no other access to, you know, you can't have a driveway and take two lots off of it. So it's not gonna, that's not gonna work. Only way you'd have to do is extend the road.
Oh, well, the lot, well, you're talking about Wayne Stofan's lot. I mean, if you're bringing that in, because this, this driveway would just serve one lot.
But that is-
I'm sorry?
That, that is not a conforming lot, because you don't have street frontage.
I understand.
So, first, let me start off by saying, the general appointment process, this is a non-binding, informal conversation.
I understand.
So, we're just-
Suggestions.
...tossing around suggestions and ideas, but nothing here is, is binding on either of our parts. As the property sits right now, we cannot approve a subdivision, because the back lot doesn't have sufficient street frontage.
Right.
And that's, that's number one, it doesn't have that.
Right.
If you were to reinstate that right-of-way that lapsed, I think that would be a minimum that would solve two problems. It would give your lot, number one, the required road frontage, and it would give Wayne's lot the required road frontage. And I know you're not concerned about his lot, but we are.
I understand. I just don't want to speak for somebody if he's not here.
And, you know, that's about the only way that you're going to get sufficient frontage to make that back portion of property a conforming lot. So that would be a minimum, and that would be contingent upon the commission waiving the 2,000-foot and 12-lot requirement. So I would suggest, at this point, I don't know if you have an engineer you're working with?
Yes.
Maybe your engineer could talk to staff, and maybe come up with some ideas for what you would be willing to do. You know, we're going to need a cul-de-sac on the end of that road.
Okay.
Which, if that displaces some of the property in Wayne's lot, you might have to do a lot-line transfer with Wayne to give him a sufficient amount of property, so that he has an approved building lot.
Okay.
But that's all things that your engineer would have to work out.
Okay.
I think that's a minimum that would have to be done.
All righty.
And that's, again, not promising that the commission would approve the waivers on the street length and the total number of lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
Anybody here have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
The, the smaller lot that was created, the fact that that currently exists as a lot, right? We're not, we're not obligated to make it work, basically.
No.
It was created, but it was created, I don't know.
It was created as part of a lapsed subdivision.
Right. But, but it currently exists as a smaller lot.
It exists as a separate legal lot, yeah.
Land law.
Yes.
It's land law.
Just deeded away.
But we're not obligated to, to make it work, basically, this commission.
I would phrase it a different way, but you, your interest is that you should be protective of that lot, and you don't want to leave a land law in solving some other problem. I mean, you should solve both problems.
This one's fine, this one's good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number six, public hearings. Okay, instructions for public hearings. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and speak into it loudly and clearly, in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Rules and procedures of hearing. Order of the hearing of an application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and answer commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be open to general comments or questions. The floor will be open to the applicant, who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comment shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. The commission has no intent to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion, such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical, as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel the need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these- If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. Okay. First up, we have SEP 2018-10, file number 16058, 234 Main Street. Special exception permit to install two above-ground, 30,000-gallon-each bulk propane storage tanks consisting of an extension of an existing non-conforming industrial heating fuel bulk terminal and distribution business use. And HBA service and installation business in accordance with zoning section 1.9.1(c)(5), including relocation of several parking spaces as well as dumpster facilities for the property. Owner applicant 234 Main Street. This is reconvened from 12/20/2018. Will, any new exhibits?
Exhibit 13, applicant letter grant and time extension. Exhibit 14, applicant response to comments. Exhibit 15, applicant response to engineer comments. Exhibit 16, fire analysis by applicant. Exhibit 17, revised plan set. Exhibit 18, updated engineer comments. And exhibit 19, updated zoning, planning and zoning comments.
That's it. Okay, for the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name's David Bjorklund, I'm a professional engineer, registered in the state of Connecticut, and we have offices here in Monroe. This evening, representing 234 Main Street LLC, and joining me is Dave Sippin, who is a member of the LLC, and Jody Amaden, who's a mechanical engineer and fire safety specialist, who has 30 years' experience in designing propane terminals such as the one that we are going to be discussing tonight. When we finished up the hearing on the December 20th, there were not major items that were left to be discussed. I think we were all pretty much in agreement with what had to be done to go forward. And so what I'd like to do is go through the staff comments, and then if anybody has any questions for Dave Sippin or Jody, we could address those after we go through the... If that's satisfactory with the chairman, we'll proceed that way.
Sounds good to me.
And I'm gonna be working from the most latest staff comments that we received last Friday. Number two, with regards to the easements, I don't believe there's anything that has to be discussed there. We had agreed that Attorney Solbel would do a revised site narrative. That was provided, and I assume that's satisfactory. The other one, we had, Will had requested that we include an ornamental tree or a couple of taller ornamental shrubs with a maturity height of eight to 12 feet. We can add some of those to the, what we had proposed was a lower ground shrub, a juniper. But there are some places, I think, such as on the far end of where the dumpster is being located, that we could add a larger tree to that area and at the end, the north end of the propane tanks. On the site plan, number 13, we'll, filling in the dates, these are more housekeeping items. Revising the proposed column, that's fine, we agree that we will do that. Expanding the light fixtures, we have, they've been added to the plans that have been submitted. The questions were the color, the color has been modified to black. The fixture heights are going to be 14 feet high, and the plan that we had resubmitted inadvertently only showed one fixture. We're gonna actually have one at each end of the proposed propane, the 30,000-gallon propane tanks.
I thought it did show that.
Pardon?
I thought it did show that.
Well, the first set that we submitted...
The photometric showed two.
Yeah.
Okay. I think on our site plan, our site grading plan, we only had one. I have copies here if you want me to just submit them for the record. I think we'll just cover this all and then when we pull everything together for the final submittal. Construction details, such as curbing and the asphalt apron, we'll be glad to provide those. And the added details on landscape planting and erosion control, those, add those, as I said, those are, I look at those as housekeeping items. With regards to Scott's comments, the, we do show proposed, current existing spot elevation should be provided in the areas of the proposed parking. I think they're there, Scott, except for, there are three spots or four spots in front of 236 Main Street where we don't have them, but we're not proposing to disturb any grades there. So we can bring their, we can bring those forward at a little darker drafting font. Plan should more clearly indicate existing and proposed grading. In the area of the tanks, we do show proposed contours. We're not proposing to, just on the apron, the new paved apron that runs out to 200 Main Street. But we will show an existing grade and a proposed grade, just to cover that. The traffic and safety, we had discussed this last time. The end islands, bollard and walls, we have some painting that is done. Rather than install islands, and I had mentioned this last time, last time. Between the oil trucks that go in and out of this site, the tenants' vehicles that go in and out of the site, we prefer not to turn these painted areas of no parking into islands. We think that just sooner or later, they're just gonna get run over by trucks and whatever landscaping is in them. As I said, this is a pretty busy area, especially during, you know, the fuel season. The drainage and utilities, Scott, this applies to the 2% reduction. The, as I just said, we'd prefer not to take those painted cross-hatched areas and turn them into landscape islands. And we looked at what it would take to achieve the 2%. We need to, 2% of the impervious area is 1,780 square feet. And, you know, if we, even if we did do all of the, those areas as islands, or just as a comparison, two parking spaces would only be 325 square feet. We would like to not be required to comply with this. This is a pre-existing site that has been developed since the 1950s. If you have a suggestion where we can pick it up, you know, we just couldn't see where we could come up with 1,700 feet.
I do.
You do.
You could put in, you could put in pervious pavement.
I don't know, the last time I checked, that wasn't readily available, but...
It's out here at the roundabout, they just put it in.
Oh, okay.
So it is being used, they used it out there. You'd be able to drive over it then, to some degree. I'm just trying to, we need to meet that requirement sooner or later for our MS4 permit, and I'm trying to get focus on the lots as they come in. When, when properties are refurbished or altered, the regulations, the guidelines are saying that that's the time you should be reducing the impervious. The other method is to install water quality control measures, and a lot of times with these types of parking lots, that, the first goal is to get more green area. The second would be, if you can't do that, to put in static or mechanical-type units. I know there's something out toward Main Street, they've got one or two...
There's one, there's one on the south side of the building and one on the north side.
Yeah, there's something, but that's another option. It's not a requirement that it has to happen at every lot. It's a requirement of the town that we're supposed to, in an overall sense, we're supposed to achieve the 2% reduction through, this is one of the programs that we're supposed to achieve it through. So it doesn't have to happen, I mean, you could get a site that has 4% reduction that compensates for this one, or...
Is this an opportunity, Dave, where, I'm looking at this, I'm assuming this is your truck turning raises? Instead of having the curb line or the line come here, could it come tighter and come right up to this, or right up to that? And capture this pavement? It's not gonna get the whole 70 yard, but...
No, we're not, we're not gonna get...
Because, I mean, I don't know what this area's for anyway, but, I mean, you could pick up a little bit more just there in the area that you're already working.
That could be an area where, you know, we...
Again, that is a truck turning raises, right?
Yeah, that's for the truck turning into the propane.
Well, yeah, I guess you got a whole 24.
The other, yeah, would be for, if a vehicle were leaving.
You'd pick up a little bit more, at least.
Scott, would groundwater recharge after the mechanical units?
Groundwater recharge, you can do it in a way that you provide the water quality volume, so that's another option, sure. That's usually in lieu of the...
Yeah, I realize that, but we're kinda, we have our, we have our back against the wall on this site.
You can do either or or both, sure. That's another option.
You're adding two islands, correct?
Yeah.
Two landscape islands, and if you expand that one on the south side, you know, you're gonna almost double the pervious area there. And I think that's probably about all we're gonna get out of this.
Yeah, we've picked the site apart.
Yeah, I mean, this is staying on the edge rather than going into here and nearly, you don't want to go into with the trucks and stuff.
Because that's a dead area anyway.
Yeah, that could be...
The pervious pavement works well, the issue with it isn't that it's not available, it's that you have to have a specialized contractor.
Well, my...
The issue is like, when they go to maintain it in the future, it's like, it's not like you can call up a contractor to come in and re, you know, overlay it or something, you know?
Right.
It has to be, there's only like one or two companies in the state that does it.
Well, we've done it, but we did it up at Post University in their parking lots, but we were paving large areas, and they, if, to only turn 1,700 feet, I don't think, I don't think we'd get a great reception.
But there are, there are other alternatives, like, for instance, pea stone or stoning a, you know, a rate, a mountable curb island that has pea stone in it. So that if a truck comes along once a month or infrequently and has to drive over it, it could easily do that, but yet it still can function as a, as a, call it a green area, it's not green, but it's, it'll absorb water, you know? So there's various methods to do it, you just have to be open to some different ways of looking at the stuff.
Okay, I guess, probably the best way to handle this would be to say that we'll agree to do that area in the northeast corner of that building. There are some other very small areas, and Scott will sit down and we'll, whatever we can nitpick out of it. But I don't think, getting to the 2% is gonna be very difficult.
What else?
That's it for the staff comments. As I said, Jody is here of the commission, I know the last time, I think there were some questions on fire safety, and we asked that we, the commission hold them, and we would have Jody at the next meeting.
Okay, well, let's start with Ryan.
I mean, I think I agree with the having some green areas, nothing too crazy, but I feel like the property, if I'm not mistaken, recently with the construction on 25, there's some water problems happening around there, so alleviating that would probably be good. I think, but, yeah, 2%. I don't think you'll get that, so, as long as you're worth it then, looks for me.
Yeah, just to, the problems with the water on 25 have nothing to do with the city.
I know, yeah, your property's not causing it, I don't know.
Coming off this lot.
Yeah, right, yeah, all that flooding is due to this small lot here.
Yeah, there are no questions.
Okay?
No, I have no questions.
No questions.
How's this, like I said, about the safety stuff from the tanks? You said you have somebody here to talk about that?
Pardon?
About the safety?
Right, let me introduce Jody, and she can give you an overview of the safety issues and how they'll be addressed. We also submitted, since the 20th, they...
My name is Jody Amaden, and my address is P.O. Box 254 Fairleigh, Vermont, 05045. And my role in the project was to complete the fire safety analysis. I worked with your local fire marshal, Marshal Devon. And what the fire safety is, is it's a 200-page manual that you can find on, that was written by the National Propane Gas Association and National Fire Protection Agency. It's an outline that I have to follow. And it is conducted for any facility that is 4,000 gallons or more. It's not just bulk plans, but some commercial accounts fall under those guidelines, too. What we do is we take a look at the site, we take a look at the resources, and we take a look at what's proposed to make sure that it meets all state, federal, and local code, and that it's using the most recent safety guidelines, which are under NFPA 58 standard 2011.
And who inspects those?
The inspections, I'm sorry?
Are the inspections done yearly by the state, or...
The inspections are done by your local fire marshal and state marshal, if he so deems that.
And how are they done? Yearly?
Usually, we invite them in once a year.
Oh, so many, there's nothing...
There's not a, it has to be inspected every, no, there is not. But usually, they come in yearly. They can, they can come in once a month if they ask. Okay.
I assume the local fire marshal has signed off on this design?
He actually, he and I sat down, and he gave me his input, and I gave him a copy, and he's reviewed it.
Thank you. I have no questions. I have a few. The facility is monitored by security cameras. Do you know if that's just a recorded system, or is it 24-hour-a-day live monitoring?
I believe it was recorded, correct?
Yes.
So if a vandal showed up at the site...
It would be recorded.
You could look back and see who did it, but there's no immediate response to any type of security issue.
At this time.
You noted a couple of, this is the report that you did, right?
Yes, I did.
You noted a couple of places in here, a concern about the welding. How big of a concern is the welding in the adjacent shop?
No, I just have to note it, it actually is outside of the standards. Where the welding takes place, if you could blow up the...
What do you want blown up?
The front garage, the garage that's closest here and the very, very front portion of it. Actually, under code, you can have a welding shop 50 feet, but where the welding takes place is on the other side of that building. But I have to note, anything that takes place on that site, I have to note.
Okay.
So, to answer your question, it's not a concern for me based on the distance, but I have to, I have to note any operations or anything that's taking place on the property.
Okay. I don't know if this report was done when there was a preliminary site plan, but you're noting concrete barriers for protection against vehicular impact?
Since then, the Sippins have decided to go with the six-inch...
Six-inch schedule 40?
Yeah, which will stop a staple. It's actually greater than, and I can make that updated change.
So that has no negative impact on your...
No, it's actually a better system.
Okay.
I think I provided, I'm not sure if it was in the package stamped engineer drawings for the updated crash.
I believe they're on this, well, I don't know if they're stamped drawings, but the drawings are on the site plan. All right, are you, available water for firefighting? You're assuming that there's 1,000 gallons per minute plus?
No, the fire, the fire marshal gave me those numbers.
So you don't know if those hydrants have been blow tested?
I don't know when they would last if they were tested, but he gave me those numbers. And 1,000 gallons is more than is required for that site.
Yeah, I think it was 750.
Actually, for the tanks themselves, it's 500 gallons per minute. And for fire protection, for hose stream is another 250 additional that we put in there. So 750 is the minimum standard.
And what's the critical time? And I believe that the, you can't answer it correctly without knowing what the volume of it, how full the tank is. But what's the critical timeframe if there's a fire at one of these tanks?
There's a lot of different parameters there. And you're right, it depends on how full it is. Because if it is very full, then the product itself cools the steel. But there again, it would depend on what the flame impingement was. And I'd like to kind of take a step back and explain some of the safeties that are in place. Because these systems have redundant, they have manual, automatic, and redundant systems in place. So in the event that there is a fire that impinges the bottom of the tank, there are actuators that are heat sensitive that melt at between 210 and 220 degrees. So if you have a flame that's impinging and it melts it, it shuts off the source at the bottom of the tank. And since 2011, we have, when these were put in place and were mandatory, we have very little information about that impingement.
These tanks all feed from the bottom?
Yes, they all feed from the bottom. These are brand-new tanks, these aren't used tanks. And they will also include another actuator for not just the liquid supply, but also for the vapor supply, which is over in the standards for the state of Connecticut.
And how many pressure reliefs per tank?
On the top, there is one pressure release, which is a dual pressure release. I'm assuming you mean the stacks on the top of the tank. There is, there is one. And it works, there's one actual, it's a Fisher relief and it has actual, it flips back and forth between one and the other, so it has a failsafe, unlike the older systems. There's also hydrostatic relief pressure in the piping. So that's another type of pressure release system that's built in.
Okay. And now back to my original question. If there were a fire, what's the critical timeframe for firefighters to be there?
They look for firefighters to be on-site in 10 minutes. And you more than meet that.
Okay, and how many hydrants? I know you note that there are...
There's three hydrants within a 1,200-foot distance.
Right in front of the next store.
I know there's one right in front of the group hall.
Right.
There's two right along the front there. And I don't believe I have the notes for where the third one is. But I did get that information from the marshal.
But based on your evaluation and your conversations with the fire marshal, you believe that there's adequate water supply and time factors for any potential problem?
Yes, I do believe that.
Okay, that was all I had.
Did any other questions come up?
Yeah, one more question. What kind of alarms are on these tanks? Are there any alarms on the tanks or no?
We just have the redundant shutdown.
If there's a leak, there's no alarm? If there's...
They're not...
A fire, there's no alarm?
As an operational procedure, they are in a closed, what we call a closed or a neutral position. So unless you are offloading a transport or loading a bobtail, all your valves are closed.
No, but I'm saying there's nothing that tells you the tanks are leaking or anything like that? You don't have any kind of safety features of that? There's none of that out there that's required?
No.
So if there's a fire, you wouldn't know there was a fire?
If there was a fire, it would shut down and they would pick it up on the cameras. The system would shut down, there would be no source of fuel for the leak.
No, I'm just saying that because, you know, how would the fire department respond unless someone called? There's no kind of alarm system on any of these kinds of things? And the state doesn't require anything like that?
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, thank you.
That concludes our presentation unless there's more questions from the commission.
Staff, any questions or comments?
Mr. Sippin, do you still have that gate in front that you lock up every night?
Dave Sippin, 234 Matri, so which gate are you referring to?
When you come into driveway, there used to be a gate right in front there. That you used to close every night so nobody could go in or out unless you had a key.
We do, not in the very front, okay? We have a gate that encloses our number two heating oil terminal. Where this terminal is, these tanks will be completely enclosed with a chain link fence. And that's the, that's what prevents people from getting inside and tampering with it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? Okay. Is there anyone here who would...
Just before you have the public comment, just the bond recommendation was 5,500.
5,500?
5,500.
Okay. Okay, now we're good?
Now you're good, sorry.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Lee Hauser, 272 Stanley Road. The Sippin Brothers have been in this, in, they're one of the oldest businesses in town and they've been good citizens throughout that town. 50 years that I live in town, they've serviced my home with heating oil. I think it's only fitting that they should be moving into something new to help to support their business. And I think it's a good opportunity and I'd like to see you give them the go-ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Any general questions or comments? Back to you, Mr. Bjorkland.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation. We appreciate your consideration.
Okay. What do you think? Open or close?
Close.
Or close?
Hearing is closed, 8:02 PM. No break now. Okay, next up. Planning and zoning commission, Monroe, Connecticut. Notice of public hearing to be held on February 7th, 2019. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute 8-7D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 7th Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut on Thursday, February 7th, 2019, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter concerning the following. ZCA 2018-02, file number 1013D, 575 Monroe Turnpike, assessor map 50, lot 60. Zone boundary change petition seeking to amend the zoning map affecting approximately 1.01 acres zone residential farming district one to business district one. Applicant petitioner, Antonio Ferreira, property owner Carolyn W. Green.
Will, what do we have for exhibit one? Zone boundary change application. Exhibit two, plan set. Exhibit three, a butter list. Exhibit four, ART planning zone comments. Exhibit five, ART engineer comments. Exhibit six, ART health department comments. Exhibit seven, ART fire department comments. Fire marshal's exhibit. Exhibit A, notice to TPH and Aquarian certified mail receipts. And I just received a revised plan set for exhibit nine.
Okay, for the applicant?
Good evening, Chairman. Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzo LLC, offices at One Post Road in Fairfield on behalf of the applicant, Antonio Ferreira, and the owner, Carolyn Green. Chairman, if you just give me a second, I'm trying to put our...
And why do that? These are the, I also received exhibit, the receipts for the public hearing notice now.
Mr. Russo, you know, the commission is not very much in favor of getting plans the night of the hearing.
Chairman, these plans are addressing the comments that we received from Will and from Scott. There are some minor modifications to how the site looks. So it's similar to the plans that you have. And we can take you through what the changes, what the changes were. A lot of them, I think, are notations. But overall, what's being proposed is very similar. It's a slight change to the parking area and the addition of some lighting. So again, Chris Russo, on behalf of the applicant, we are here for you for the property located at 575 Monroe Turnpike, which is located in the B1 district, or is located in the RF1 district. And we're proposing to change the boundary of the zone to the B1 district.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Are these plans for the zone change or for both?
They're for both. The front page is for the zone boundary change.
Okay, so I'm going to separate the first page for this file and we'll save it as for the other file, okay?
All right, commissioners hear that? Just the front page of this set of plans is related to the ground boundary.
So I'm sure the commissioners have all driven by this site a million times and know exactly where it is. But just to orient you, the site is located right here, 575 Monroe Turnpike. To the north is a vacant lot that's located in the RF1 district that has a large portion of it's covered by wetlands. There's a water course that runs here and that's in a private individual's ownership. To the south is land that's owned by Aquarian. There's a brook here, it's called Beardsy Brook. And as you go farther down south, these are also vacant parcels, except for a house that enters onto part of that street. And then here's the big Y from the site is the old Goodwill Building. Just to the north of that is the Steve's Office Building. There's some single-family homes here and a gas station is down here. This site has a history as a single-family dwelling with a office use. It has had this non-conforming use for decades. There's some vagueness in the approvals that were originally issued for the site way back in the early 70s. They don't, the approvals back then don't have as great of detail as Will's approvals. But generally, it's, it's get commissioners' approvals. But generally, it was an office use. Sometimes it was specified as a real estate office, sometimes it's a dentist's office. But I think for the purposes of this discussion, it's a non-conforming office use. And it's also had a lot of non-conformities in other regards. It's driveway, it's parking area, it's signage, it's lighting. And what we're asking to do tonight is to really finally bring the use of this property into conformity by changing the zone and also bring up the standards of what's on the site. It's drainage, it's lighting, it's parking. Bring that all up to your coats. But at the same point, this is not opening up a Pandora's box for this site. The site has some strict limitations that really will restrict what this site could become, even though switching it to the B1 zone opens it up to a number of different uses. There's a lot of limitations on this site that I think you'd be comfortable in understanding in switching the zone, what might be possible here. And just to show you the site, let's just... The first limitation being the wetlands, which make up a tremendous amount of the property right here in the back. You can see here, there's a water course that flows from the neighbor to the north, the property to the north flows through the back. And this, it covers the entire back half of the property. Some challenges when we were going for the development of this site was that there is a private well that's located in the front. It is located right here. And so with this private well, there's a 75-foot well radius for a septic system. So when we were trying to, in developing the site, it became very difficult where there was a lot of test holes. There's probably a record number of test holes done on this property for trying to locate the septic system. Because you have to stay outside of the 75-foot well radius for a septic system and you have the wetlands here. So after months of working with the health department, we were finally able to come to agreement on a location here. I'm showing you this site-specific portion of this just to point out that any type of development that would go here would have a lot of limitations because of the narrow area that you really have to work with. And what type of septic system really would be able to get approved on this site? This is really all they were able to come to agreement on for this. So this cannot, this property can't be connected with a property next to it for some type of large development, especially when you have the water course here and Aquarian land down here. So really, what you see is probably what you can get on this property. And we think switching the zone and finally getting rid of a non-conforming use will put this commission in a much better position to be able to control the use of this site and to control what goes on there. Obviously, if there's any changes to uses in the future, it has to come before you. And the problem with leaving a non-conforming use like this here and allowing it to operate is while now it might not be a bustling office, there's always the potential in the future that somebody could come in there and increase the intensity of the use of this non-conforming use with all these non-conforming parking areas and drainage. And they would have that right. They would have that right to come in there and increase the intensity. Actually, last night I was dealing with this with a vehicle service station in Trumbull. It's a non-conforming... It's a non-conforming use. It's in a residential zone, and a owner wants to come in and put in an automated car wash. Similar type of use, fell under the non-conforming use category, and is able to, the applicant there was able to come in and really increase the intensity of the non-conforming use. Same type of situation here where somebody could come in, have a much more intense type of office use, and not have to really improve this property at all. With this application, you change it to the B1 zone, follow it with our special exception permit application, can make sure the new parking area is up to your standards, drainage system, septic, and really improve the site. So we think this change in zone is really tremendous improvement for this property. Long overdue. The other thing, which again is really more part of the special exception permit application, but in developing this site, it forces us to go to inland wetlands. And that provides the opportunity for wetlands to ask for a better barrier buffer to the wetlands. And as you hear in our presentation on the special exception permit, we are proposing a buffer to run the entire width of the site. So we are, right now, there is no buffer at all between the use, the commercial use that's there now, has free access out to the wetlands. By changing the zone and coming in with a special exception permit, we're going to be able to put a buffer there and protect these wetlands, which are fairly close. We also think it's in conformity with your POCD. The POCD states that Monroe Turnpike was a first priority for strengthening economic development. This site is directly across from commercial properties. It's very close to the Big Y Shopping Center. I think it's a natural extension of the B1 zone. And the site itself was actually included in a map in the POCD as an area that would be targeted for commercial development. With regards to the zone change, that's basically it. We think eliminating the non-conforming use, bringing this property finally into conformity is a huge positive for changing the zone and being able to bring this property up to your today's standards. Happy to answer any questions. Zone change. Unless you want me to do, do you want me to do the special exception permit together with it or not?
No, we're completely separate applications. Ryan?
No questions.
No questions.
I have a question. This is, I know this is not the same situation, but like when we were talking about Cummings going to, across from the Walgreens over there.
No, we were talking about setbacks in the LORs.
Correct, but that's who came before us. So my question is if we change this to B1, how does that affect the rest of the RF1s in town?
It has nothing to do with the other RF1s. I'm not sure, what is your concern?
I'm just, I just don't know if we change it to a B1, and the rest of the RF1s could come in and say...
Well, true. And so part of your analysis should include, how does this relate to the RF1? How does this relate to other districts such as the B1? And is it more related to the B1 or the RF1? So one may say, in this instance, which Chris, I'm sure will do a little more, is that across the street are two properties, go to zone B1. So there's B1 in proximity, as opposed to go someplace up, you know, north end of Monroe Turnpike where it's all RF1, RF2, and there's no business district, and it's in isolation. So those are the kinds of things you want to evaluate. And then you look at the properties surrounding it, you know, what's their potential for expansion, and also the proximity to the larger business district. So those are the kinds of things you want to evaluate. And that's one of the things that was supposed to be submitted was the, in addition to the narrative which explains some of that, is the area and existing conditions land use map, which would show you that graphically and tell you that in a narrative of the reasons why there's no creep that would, you know, other creep from the neighboring area or from someplace in isolation. There may be properties around it that also would be suited for expansion of the business to connect the business zones. That's something you could think about, but that's, they're not asking for that, but that's a potential.
And Commissioner, if I could just respond to that. Will's exactly right on a couple things. I mean, the B1 district is directly across the street. And looking at this map, you know, here's the property, and there's a break here, but in reality, if you switch over to the, if you switch over to the aerial map here, you know, this is the Aquarian land right here, so this will remain vacant, and there's wetlands in here. So it's an extension up to here of the B1 zone. I think the condition of this property with the water course running right here and the, and Beardsley Brook right here is, at least right now, a natural end to the commercial corridor. It restricts it from expanding up. There's no way this could be combined and expanded to make a further B1. So I think the site conditions restrict how far this B1 zone could go up unless you made some change to your regulations and put in some type of overlay district.
No, just the only, my only concern was I don't want to, obviously not against going to a B1 considering that they're stuck in that area, you know. Does make sense. I just don't want to start, you know, like Will said, if we're going to evaluate them case by case, that's totally different, and that's fine.
And you are working in your legislative discretion, so you have your greatest level of discretion on those types of applications. And I think other RF1 sites would, one, they probably won't, or might not have the history as a, with a commercial use that this property does, and they might not be located, you know, directly across the street from B1 district. I'm sure there are some that would fit that, but again, you can take that by a site-by-site basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the adjacent properties are RF1 on that side of the street?
Yes, so if I pull up the zoning map, this is RF1, and these are RF1.
Those are all RF1.
But again, these are all vacant and undeveloped, really.
And the subject property is currently a non-conforming business use?
It's a non-conforming office use.
Office use.
Yes.
So if none of this gets approved, it continues to be an office?
Correct.
Or a house.
Correct, or a house. Unless somebody abandoned it, if somebody did it.
It has, it has an apartment, and it has an office which was for decades, a dentist's. And the dentist's office actually occupies the majority of the building, and there was some other issues with owner occupancy and all that kind of stuff, which we've worked out with that as far as the non-conforming, but that could continue in that state if someone wasn't the mind to do that and continue that. So it would continue to be potentially substantial, an office or a business use in addition to the apartment.
So it's a business use regardless of how we approve the property, it's being used at?
Well, but there are limitations as to what it can be in, you know, it can be only a certain type of business office. For instance, it can't be a restaurant, it can't be a cafe, it can't be, it's questionable whether the intensification depends on what you're talking about when you talk about intensification, because the non-conforming status is you can't expand it non-conformally. But it would have some limitations in it. You're right, the zone change brings it into the commercial district, and it gives you more oversight, probably, and opportunity to fix up the property in another way, assuming we can get through the environmental issues, but, and it is, you know, in isolation, if you go back to that aerial, where, as Chris said, this is Aquarian, I believe this is Aquarian as well. That status is in flux right now, but it is very wet, there's a stream in here. This is part of this residential lot, which is built way up here. It does have furnace that comes out here, but that lot is basically a residential lot. It's built, I don't know the status of owns that, but I do believe that's kind of a slope right there at the road, and I believe the wetland is also right here, quite substantial. That's where they did the bridge work, I think, or that was in here maybe, that was the bridge. So there's a lot of wetland going on right in here. These are all houses that are active. So I mean, if anything, it would be these things that might have some potential.
And I could show you the, so you can see, this is the wetlands map, but this map is actually not entirely accurate because the water pours.
Yeah, this is a hydrox soil map based on like 1940s, 1950s, high aerial flights, and it's just doing soil types based on that. It's not ground truth to the actual wealth or stream. It doesn't include streams and everything like that.
Yeah, so then there's a water course here too, so it's very restricted.
And Will, you would agree that even if approved, there wouldn't be limitations as to what the different types of use?
Well, the property is sort of self-limiting because there, as Chris was pointing out in the site plan, and again, that's part of the narrative analysis, should have been something with some analysis, you could do the site analysis. The information's here, but if you called it out and made it more prominent, we know that, because here, the wetlands is basically taking up this back half of the lot, more or less. So you have the existing house, you have some existing pavement, you have a backyard which substantially is going to be encumbered by your septic system. And the septic system has some limited capacity, obviously, so the type of uses that are going to go in there are going to be limited by that and the amount of parking that they can drive, and then the stormwater that they can deal with. So it's as small property as it is, so they're sort of self-limiting in those respects, so I don't see there much expansion.
But any B1 use that can fit within those parameters would be allowed, a permitted use.
Right.
But if they changed the building at all, they would have to come before you again.
Well, anything to B1 district, they change anything, they have to come to us, but, but again, the envelope is pretty much this, so I mean, that's...
But, and again, you know, the, with a non-conforming use, and Will's correct, when you, if we expanded to take over the entire building, you couldn't do that with a non-conforming use. You only can occupy that portion, but you can intensify what you do in that portion. And so what might be a small office doesn't seem to get a lot of use now. In the future, who knows if somebody will be able to utilize that and intensify the use there. And, you know, I know, talking with Attorney Rizio before this hearing, he did an application for, was a small coffee shop, a P. Gordon's Coffee Shop, and he, it was a non-conforming use, switched it to a Starbucks. Last night, we had a vehicle service bay that was just your local mechanic, his vehicle service bay, you know, before automated, it's an automated car wash. So in leaving a non-conforming use like that, there's always that risk, and then, and plus the fact that you can, you know, you can operate with the current site conditions. And if you've driven by this parking lot when it was freezing a few weeks ago, it was like an ice rink in the middle of the parking lot. So, you know, being able to switch the zone and present this special permit application that we are, we could solve hopefully a lot of those problems on the site.
Anything else? Michael?
What's going on with the property to the north?
I believe it's for sale.
And I honestly don't know what you could do with it. An engineer would probably be better at answering that. There's so many, it's a very wet property, it's got this water course running through. I think it has a lot of limitations. Even though it's a big piece of property, it has a lot of limitations.
I mean, I know the status of it, but I think Aquarian is interested in it, so again, that would just add to the non-development aspect.
We're really kind of on an island where we are.
Does it flood, Will, with heavy rains like we had there?
There is flooding, there is, I think, I don't know what map it was, by the aerial. So Beardsley Brook does have flood plain related to it, so behind, is this hit me? So there is a stream, is it on, the stream on the property, I think?
Yeah, here, if you go to the site plan, you can see it, it's noted on the site plan here.
Even with that new bridge?
Well, this is, this is, I believe...
It's upstream of that, isn't it?
Yeah, the flood plain's not, the flood plain's off the property.
Yeah, flood plain's off, but there's this stream which does contribute to the flow into the brook, so this is going this way into the brook. And in this, there is a grade change around here, and the plan is to do some filling in here to get the pad for the septic area. So this elevation is higher than here, I mean, it's not steep slope or anything, but it is higher. And as Chris said, this is iced over because it does flood, and that's probably lack of positive drainage, not so much as flooding. So the flood does come into this area, and these areas, Beardsley Brook and this stream, when it rains, you get quite a bit of water.
And I don't know if the commission received a letter from Joe Welch from Aquarian, who I spoke to today, actually, I sent him plans. We addressed a lot of his comments because he was talking to us, he's very familiar with the property, and he oversees the property to the south.
Do you want to see the video?
The what? Is it related to the zone change or related to the SCP?
Well, it relates to the property.
And they were sent a notification about the zone change, so it does...
He just submitted it to us, he didn't make it specific to anything. I think I have it. Where is that?
Well, this is mine, that's...
This is you?
Yeah, this is me.
Did you take mine out?
Oh, sorry, I took yours out.
Um...
SCP.
Now we're spanning over to the air properties of this. So that last stream was the stream that's on the back of their property. So you can see there's a grade change here that goes down. So that's sort of that stream that's there, and this is the flooding from the Beardsley Brook. But I don't believe it gets on your property.
No, and...
There's pretty good grade differential.
Yeah, there is, as I said. It doesn't get upon the property.
And I could speak more about it with the special exception permit, but we addressed a lot of his comments. And I sent him a lot of plans, so he's reviewing the wetland buffer, and he's going to respond to us on that.
Save that for the SCP.
Yes.
I have no other questions.
Thank you.
Staff, have anything else regarding the zone change? Will, do you feel that the narrative has been adequately addressed, or does that make it a B1?
Well, these are my comments based on the narrative that was given to us, so they haven't done anything different to that. And they did give us that, the required map that's per the statute. We did talk about some of that, so we can decide the need for that. They gave us a revised map, I don't know what it says, I'm assuming that's addressing comment three. In addition, I'm going to jump to comment five. Comment five, they did provide the receipts, that was one of the things I listed in the exhibits, so that I was taken care of. And the applications are pending in front of, you have an applicant pending in front of any wellens, but we have not received a report from them. So that would be true for both applicants.
I believe the intent is to leave the, especially since we just gave you some plans. The intent is to leave the public hearing open, especially since we just gave you plans, so we can request a continuance and keep it open and address any further comments that Will has or that the commission has.
Okay. Well, let's see if we have any public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Mr. O'Hara? This is a zone change.
Understood. Patrick O'Hara, 282 Shelton Road. Couple of things. If I remember correctly from my days on Planning and Zoning Commission, when there were some discussions about this property, the non-conforming use is not the property, it's a portion of the property, and I think the commission needs to be very clear when they're considering what they're doing, because this is a residential property that has a use, that's an office that over time somehow became established outside of your normal office uses on a residential property. And I believe that's the non-conforming use, and I think you need to be very clear that you're talking about a couple of hundred square feet versus the entire, what is it, a one-acre lot? That's number one. Number two, for years, we've had these discussions about how far up does business go on Route 111. From my experience and my 54 years living in Monroe, the end of the line was the gas station, the Big Y, and the two buildings that are up there now, Steve's and the old empty Goodwill building, that was the end of the line. I heard some discussion about, you know, how do we move forward? Now, I'm not saying that you don't move forward, I'm always open to seeing commercial activity grow in the town of Monroe, but there's two properties just south of the abandoned Big Y, what about some of the other properties going up 111? Where are we going to go with this? Because what I'm hearing is, there's one property that has a problem, and its solution is to do a zone change in the middle of a residential zone, but we're across the street from two other businesses, one of which was established, I think, before zoning, I think that's Mary's and all that sort of thing. So while I'm standing up during the opposition period, I think I'm presenting more, some concerns about what it is you're doing, I know the applicant can speak to some of those things. When I hear non-conforming use, I hear my house down on 110, in 1930, I started a bed and breakfast, that's a non-conforming use. This is not a non-conforming use, this is an office that somehow got established on a residential property, and I'm not sure that's the way to fix it, but that's your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone with any, oh, sir, you have? You'd like to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Sir, please go to the microphone and give us your name and address.
My name is Carlos Solis, and I'm on 57th Lane, so just on the other side of the Brook. And our concern is how much noise is going to create, all this construction, and how far is the parking lot going towards the Brook? I'm right there, I'm right there, right, right by the Brook. I can't walk, it's like 50 feet from the Brook.
Is that your house, right at the end of Countryside? Right there?
Yeah. So it's very close to the, how far is the parking lot going to be built on that side? Oh, right there? So, yeah, and I heard that the Brook will be protected, right, so nothing's going to go over there.
The Brook's off site, it's on another property.
Yeah.
The property ends here.
Okay. Is there going to be fenced out?
Well, right now, what we're talking about is strictly a zone change, we're not talking about the development of the parcel, that's going to be the next year. It's two separate.
And the childcare center and all that?
No, it's going to be tonight.
Yes, the childcare center.
The what?
Yes, the childcare center.
Yeah.
We're going to have that in about five or 10 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any general questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm an attorney with an office in New Canaan. I'm here representing my twin brother, who some of you may remember was here a couple of months ago. He is the owner of 574 Monroe Turnpike LLC, which is the owner of that property there. And he just, he's ordered me up here because he's concerned that he's gone through all these hoops to get site plan approval, he's got an empty store, and we're very optimistic, finally, that we're going to be able to obtain a package store liquor permit for the empty store, and then all of a sudden, there's going to be a childcare center, so there's concern about that, although I have talked to Will and he, and he says, well, that's not really an impediment. Well, that's why I'm not conversant enough to be in favor or against it, but I am here to make the comment that if in fact you approve any one of these applications, we would just request, because there's two prongs to this, one is not to be in violation of any Monroe zoning, but then the other one is to make sure that the Liquor Control Commission doesn't misconstrue your regulations, and then after all the hoops we've gone through with the commission and here, they decide, wait a minute, look what Monroe just did, we're not going to give you a permit. So just with that in mind, I'm requesting that the commission, if you in fact create a situation, approve one of these exceptions for the childcare, that in your approval, you just make it crystal clear that you are, that this is not an impediment in any way to a package store liquor permit, because we already have site plan approval, et cetera, if you follow me on that. Just, so if I'm in front of the commission and they're raising the issue that, wait a minute, Monroe just did something new that voids your site plan approval, I can say, no, read what they wrote here, which is clearly that a package store liquor permit is not, I don't know exactly the language, but it's not at risk for or in conflict with a childcare center. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Quick question, Mr. Stewart. So obviously, you're kind of talking about the daycare thing, which we haven't technically gotten to yet, but the, as the business there, would you want the zone across to be a business zone? Not thinking forward of it as a daycare, but would you consider business across from business probably a good thing to make that site more marketable?
Well, look.
And again, a daycare is what might be coming, but if it was another business.
Well, that's what they're asking for, and frankly, I haven't really gone through this. I mean, I'm a lawyer, I mean, just as I looked at it right away, I mean, the legal issue is raised, is spot zoning, but, but just as a practical matter, I mean, I'm sure my brother has a, I mean, he's a good competitor, he's for business, but, you know, it's not going to help to have, especially when you have, I guess, the business situation that you have in Monroe. I understand the property right next door to it is also empty, we're empty, and now we're going to have, instead of a small, I guess, 100 square foot office, we're going to have a newly rezoned to the business district. What's going to go in there in future, what it's going to do to our property, I don't know, but, and I am going to look further into and talk to my brother about what this means. Right now, we're just concerned about the package store liquor permit, and frankly, we're more concerned right now about the Liquor Control Commission and how they construe things from the commission than we are with any zoning problem that we have with the town of Monroe.
For clarity of the record, the business that's on this property is nearly 1,400 square feet, and the apartment is roughly 700 square feet, it's not 100.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else who'd like to speak or has any general questions or comments? All right, back to you.
Chairman, in response to Mr. Stewart's comments, trying to think of how to limit it, it's really more of a special exception permit comment towards that application. From a zone change point of view, his property's a business use, and we're asking for the same thing directly across the street. I can't really on the zone change talk about specific uses that we're proposing in it, but I think it's in conformity certainly with his property. With regards to the neighbor before that, again, I can't really get into specific site development, but I will say that on our site plan, there's a limited disturbance, and I think you can just see that from the aerial map, and his property's over here, and so, you know, really, we can't go beyond here, and you have all of Beardley Brook here, and by going to your B1 standards, you have the right to control noise and lighting, and so can certainly make sure that his property isn't impacted. With regard to Mr. O'Hara's comments, for the use, it's on land records, it runs with the land, it cannot be taken away, this can be a non-conforming use, it is established. There might be, it's almost the opposite of what he's saying, which is a, an illegal use that goes in, and it's non-conforming, and it doesn't have the proper approvals. We have the approvals, it's filed, it's a non-conforming use, it can stay. And as Will stated, the non-conforming use actually takes up the majority of the building, and in your 2010 P O C D, if I could just pull up, which talks about future, actually talked about an overlay district, which went well beyond this property, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it. That went well beyond this property. So this property's really the first step of what was contemplated for a future overlay district that would extend a variety of uses way past, so I do think this proposal for zone change is in conformity with your P O C D, your 10, that P O C D. And we respectfully request a continuance of this hearing.
Okay, anybody else have anything else before we move on? Will, Scott?
I don't.
Okay, we will continue this to our next meeting, two weeks, then the time.
You'll have to get us anything by next week.
Yes, Chairman, I think we can get everything in by.
When is your next visit with Will?
Wednesday, Wednesday, the 13th, yes.
Next Thursday?
Next Wednesday, 13th.
So you'd have to give.
But we've submitted our plans to Will.
I understand that, but we wouldn't get, would we get anything from Will by the next week?
Typically not, I mean, they're going to close their hearing, and they have, just like you, they do a draft, and then they vote to follow.
Man, I don't want to waste a visit, there's nothing to do, that's my point.
So the next meeting after the 13th is the, I don't think there's another meeting in. Is there another meeting? Regardless, it'd be after the 21st, right? So you wouldn't have a final decision from the commission.
27.
We wouldn't close again, so what's the, what's the point? That's up to you then.
At least we'll take a look at it, and we can submit a letter.
If you come to our next meeting, there will not be a wetlands decision by then.
Approval, a wetlands decision.
So we won't be making any decisions for a wetland.
So we respectfully request a continuance to the March 7th meeting.
March 7th, all right, continue to March 7th.
Thank you, Chairman.
8:40 H P M.